Flying J Truck Stops Alter Its Plan For The Thunder Bay Area. City Council Gets Set To Look At A New Pet Bylaw. And Pamela Wallen’s Senate Expenses Go Under The Microscope. Thank you for being with us this evening. Nine years after their proposed truck stop sparked a rash of opposition, Flying J officials have announced a new plan to set up shop in the Thunder Bay area.
The company says it’s abandoning its plans for a travel plaza at the corner of Oliver Road and the Thunder Bay Expressway. Instead, the Pass Lake Truck Stop is being converted into a Shell Flying J franchise. Jonathan Wilson reports.
It’s opening up again, and that is a good news story for Shunia.
Shunia Reeve Maria Harding says she’s excited to end the speculation and confirm that the Pass Lake Truck Stop, which has been closed for the past two years, will be reopening under a new name.
It has come to the municipality’s attention that the Pass Lake Truck Stop will be reopening, probably before Christmas. The owner is not quite sure yet if everything will be in order by that time. It has also come to our attention that the Truck Stop will be known as, officially known as the Shell Flying J.
The name Flying J has been synonymous with controversy in Thunder Bay since the US-based company first announced plans in 2004 to build a travel plaza at the corner of Oliver Road and the Expressway. City Council approved the $7 million project unanimously, but neighbors fought the development for years before finally reaching a compromise in 2007. In 2008, Flying J went into bankruptcy protection in the US and then merged with Pilot Travel Centers. The company has hinted several times that it would soon move ahead with construction, but now Pilot Flying J spokesperson Sharon Donald says they are no longer planning to build at that location, and she confirms that the owner of the Pass Lake Truck Stop, Ron Parcher, is rebuilding that facility into a Shell Flying J.
And it will be operated by the owner of the property. It will be an independent operator. And it’s a good news story for Shunia. It’s a good news story for the traveling public, and a good news story for the people who are looking for work in our area.
The company has over 500 locations across North America, with the nearest ones being in Kappa Scasing to the east and Winnipeg to the west. Parcher had previously secured a special permit to allow his truck stop to access the new four-lane highway being built between Thunder Bay and Nipigon. It will be the only gas bar located along that 110-kilometer route.
I think we have missed the Truck Stop for the last couple of years. I think it’s appropriate that it is being reopened, especially with the new highway going through.
There’s no word yet on what Pilot Flying J plans to do with this 20-acre property on Oliver Road, which they purchased for $1.3 million. The neighbors who oppose the development tooth and nail say they’re pleasantly surprised by the change of plans. They say Pass Lake is a perfect place for a Truck Stop, and they wonder why Flying J didn’t just locate there in the first place. Jonathan Wilson, TBT News.
Thunder Bay man will spend 90 days in jail for possessing more than 1,700 images of child pornography. Forty-six-year-old Michael Todd Payne was sentenced today at the Ontario Court of Justice to three months in jail and one year probation. Payne was charged by city police in January and pleaded guilty in June to possession of child porn. A second charge of distribution of child pornography was withdrawn. A joint submission for sentencing from the Crown and Payne’s lawyer was accepted. He is also prohibited from attending any parks, playgrounds, schools, daycares, or other places where children under 18 frequent. Payne is free on bail but was taken back into custody this morning. He will have to report to the provincial sex offender registry for the next 10 years.
Some residents of North Hill Street were witness to an unusual and disturbing sight last night. At around 8 o’clock, neighbors found a seagull stuck 25 feet in the air on a piece of fishing line draped across the street. Olivia Breton had just put her dogs out when she noticed a group of people standing on the street. She looked up and saw a seagull hanging by its wing from a line in the middle of the road.
He’s hanging by one wing, he’s trying to flap, and all he’s doing is twirling himself around and getting the stuff wrapped even tighter and tighter around the end of his wing. The feathers on the end of his wing, of course, were all, like, finished. I mean, it’s a creature. It’s an animal. Like, they’re so helpless. And that’s our fault for things like that. That’s humans. That’s not their fault.
After being told hydro crews, fire crews, and animal rescue couldn’t deal with the situation, the neighbors pooled their resources to get the seagull down. Using a piece of fence post, a blowtorch, and a ladder, they managed to burn the line, unwind it, and allow the seagull to fly away. What remains a mystery is how the fishing line got there. It continues to run through the trees through several blocks of property.
A new bylaw may be in the works for Thunder Bay, and some say it’s long overdue. Right now, there is no limit on the number of cats or dogs anyone can have in their home or apartment, and that’s led to some troublesome cases of animal hoarding in the city. Many communities already have bylaws in place, and there is a wide range in the number of pets people are allowed to have. Some places let pet owners keep as many as six animals, others limit it to just four. Councillor Aldo Roberto thinks it’s time for Thunder Bay to have its own bylaw, and he says the research is already underway.
They’ve looked at other cities, they see what they’re doing, what their best practices are, and we’re going to adapt those best practices. We’re not here to reinvent the wheel and make up new ones. We’re just going to adopt what other cities are doing, and from what we’re hearing from the other cities, it’s turned out to be a very, very positive tool in the toolbox to assist people in, sort of, taking care of individuals who don’t take care of their pets.
Pets aren’t the only bylaw for discussion at tonight’s meeting. Representatives from the Regional Health Sciences Centre will also be on hand. They’ve been trying to get people to stop smoking on the hospital property, but that hasn’t worked, so they will now ask council to amend its municipal smoke-free bylaw to include the grounds of the hospital.
The province of Ontario has yet to reach an agreement with the federal government regarding the experimental lakes area near Knorr. The province has committed to cover the cost of operating the ELA, but time is running out. Ottawa recently cut funding to the 40-year-old facility. It was allowed to be reopened for a limited time while an agreement was worked out. Scientists from all over the world pay to use the station, and according to the Council of Canadians, the operation costs are between $200,000 and $400,000 per year. Knorr MP Greg Ripford, who was recently named the federal minister of science, says he remains hopeful and positive that the process to transfer the ELA will be a success.
...organization out there in a position, given its academic connections, its global characteristics, to continue on with that research. Over the past eight or nine months, we’ve been working closely with that organization, bound by a confidentiality agreement, but supporting it with business plan, business plan development, and various strategic things that the IISD felt were necessary in order for them to transfer.
Ripford says it now rests in the province’s hands. He adds he’s confident the government will live up to the fact they’re holders of the land that the research is taking place, and there will be a smooth transition moving forward.
Ontario Provincial Police have now released the name of a man whose body was located near Marathon earlier this month. He’s been identified as 59-year-old Miroslav Naborechak of Kitchener. The man was found by blueberry pickers August 3 inside of a vehicle parked in a remote area off of Highway 17. Police say foul play is not suspected.
A hitchhiker who was seemingly desperate for a ride is in hot water with police following a dangerous stunt this weekend. OPP were alerted Saturday evening after a witness saw the hitchhiker jump on a transport truck that was stopped at a red light at the Thunder Bay Expressway at Red River Road. Officers finally located the truck in Shunia Township at Alderato Beach Road and found the hitchhiker huddled in the space between the tractor and the trailer. He’s been charged with a seatbelt infraction.
Food and housing are two areas of concern that local women’s shelters always have to deal with, but today Fay Peterson House and Bintigan got a boost from a local real estate agency to help deal with that issue. Royal Page pooled together their resources and donated $3,000 to the two shelters today. That money came from a Mother’s Day yard sale that was put on by the company with some assistance from AMJ Campbell Moving. Homeowners would drop off items for the yard sale, and others would buy those items or simply donate money to the cause.
People would bring in, you know, a $50 check in here, you know, put it in the bank for your cause. It’s awesome.
Well, I think it’s really important that when the community’s involved in anything that has to do with fundraising for us, that they get to know what the issue is, right? They get to know that this is about violence against women and that the community’s out there supporting us to raise funds for a really important cause.
That’ll really help them with their first or first or last month’s rent or whatever they need for their homes. So it is a really, really good opportunity for us to utilize the funds that we get from people like Royal Page, which is really, you know, very, very helpful for us.
This was the first year the Royal Page Mother’s Day Yard Sale has been held. All proceeds go directly to Fay Peterson and Bintigan, the two organizations help women who are fleeing abusive situations, and in total, that money will help hundreds of women and children in our community.
Thrill seekers and people who just can’t get enough carnival food and entertainment turned out at the Canadian Lakehead Exhibition over the past five days. The annual event draws in huge numbers, and this year tops some of the biggest attendance figures to date. Courtney Rutherford wraps up what’s been a fun week for everyone who attended.
If you’ve driven down Memorial Avenue in the past couple of days, there’s a chance you’ve heard something like this. It’s the final day of the annual CLE, and close to 70,000 people have walked through the gate. The fair has been around for 123 years, and the success of the event always comes down to one thing.
It’s tradition. Grandma and grandpa brought their children here. Their children are now bringing their children, and I think summer without the fair is not summer.
With various kinds of entertainment, rides for all ages, and various types of food such as corn dogs and freshly squeezed lemonade, there’s just about something for everyone.
Just hang out, have some fun, family fun, entertainment, you know, spend lots of money with the kids.
Well, we’ve already done the Tilt-A-Whirl. I’m hoping that we’ll do that one over there, not sure what it’s called, and we’re going to do the Ferris Wheel really soon, so.
I love it. Every year I’m going to come. Best part about it, if you’re going to do it, is do the Ring of Fire. Do the Ring of Fire.
But there isn’t just thrill rides to test your level of bravery. There’s also a number of games to test your skill level, like the classic dart game. With a number of prizes to be won from small to large, there wasn’t a shortage of games to try to win one. Prize or no prize, those we spoke with have enjoyed every minute.
I went down. I like, I like the Ferris Wheel.
What’s, why the Ferris Wheel?
It’s fun. It’s really fun. Because all the rides are scary, playing games all around here.
The Zipper, Sky Master, Starship 2000, Rock and Roll, Ring of Fire, and Yo-Yo.
I think it’s important so we can all get together and all go on all the rides together.
The youth stage has provided 21 small bands the opportunity to come play in front of a number of people throughout the past couple of days. To cap off the entire event, Harlequin was the final act to grace the main stage. The doors close until next year around midnight. Courtney Rutherford, TBT News.
Live From The Rock Folk Festival this past weekend with a lineup of over 20 performers over three days, there was definitely something for every music lover to enjoy. Tara Lehr reports.
Thousands flocked to Red Rock’s Marina for the 11th installment of the Live From The Rock Folk Festival. Held on the shore of Lake Superior, the festival featured everything from jazz to blues to country to folk music on four stages. Renee Lamarrue is one half of the country-pop duo Keith and Renee. The Winnipeg bass band have been together for 16 years and play festivals throughout the country. It was their fourth appearance at the festival, their last being in 2006. Lamarrue says it was great to be back in Red Rock.
If anything, it’s bringing back a lot of good memories. So, yeah, the vibe here is always so relaxed, and it’s a great place to just get away. And, yeah, coming back here, I’m just remembering all of those good times, so, yeah, it’s pretty great. It’s nice, it’s family-oriented, and you can really hear the music and, you know, people telling stories, and I think that’s really important, and that’s what you get out of coming here for sure.
Jennifer Ives took over as this year’s artistic director and put together a fantastic lineup of artists. She says the help of dedicated volunteers and the community have made the festival a success for the past 11 years.
One of the performers last night said, you know, “Red Rock and the people at this festival are incredible.” People come up to us and say that they loved our show, that they’re so happy we came, that is there anything they can do. Always thinking about how to make it better for everybody, and that’s, for me, that’s what’s magical about it, is that it’s a community, not just an event.
The festival included an artisans market, camping, voyageur canoe excursions, and children’s programming. Ives says there’s something special about the town of Red Rock that keeps people coming back.
The festival itself is almost an extension because the community here, they care so much about each other. There have been a lot of bumps in the road in this town, and the fact that it’s still here and, you know, has beautiful parks and gardens, and this facility, and that they open their hearts up to complete strangers. You know, I think it’s just a magic.
Tara Lehr, TBT News.
Massive turnout this weekend for an absolutely filthy time that also raised some big bucks. Thunder Bay’s first-ever Dirty Girls Mud Run was a perfect outdoors event, according to run organizers. Charlotte Brown is still surprised at the number of those who signed up and came out to watch. Those taking part may have felt like they were doing military training, and that may be because the 16 obstacles were designed by the Lake Superior Scottish Regiment.
Some fairly unique obstacles. Obstacles that they’re very familiar with through their own military training, but how they translated them to the piece of terrain that we used out at this old barn and the farm field behind was quite creative.
We had 150 teams and 750 racers, but everything went really smoothly and no injuries. Everybody having happy, smiley, muddy faces at the end of it, so I think we’re able to make it bigger for next year, or at least that’s the plan.
The goal on top of having a dirty good time was to raise about $100,000 for the Canadian Cancer Society, with some last-minute sponsors step forward, bumping the final tally to $200,000.
Congratulations to the organizers. Great event, by the way. Could’ve got a little muddy out there earlier today on the weather front. It was just wet to start the day, nice and sunny for the afternoon. Could get wet again, though, right, Matt?
Yeah, that’s exactly it, Barry. Kind of some pop-up showers this morning that we didn’t really know we were going to see, again, until this morning, until about they happened, and we do have a chance of showers early this evening. I’ll get to that in just a second as you have a look at the radar for the past 24 hours. There are those showers that moved in over the course of the day, pop-up showers, depending on where they were and depending on where you were in the city or in the region, but those did get a little bit wet this morning. Not too much rain, mostly showers across the region. Today, Thunder Bay, or sorry, across the region, beautiful temperatures right now, as Barry just mentioned. Lots of sunshine, a few clouds here and there, but out western part of the region, Fort Francis, 20 degrees, Red Lake at 21, as you look out, 19 as well. Big Trout Lake, 13. Marathon as well, they’re the chilly spot, 12 degrees actually right now in Marathon, so they’re not liking that so much, but that’s okay. As we have a look, Thunder Bay, partly cloudy skies. We hit a high of 18 degrees today, not too much wind to speak of, very minimal, but again, beautiful conditions this afternoon, so hopefully got a chance to go out and do something, maybe not cut the grass, because the grass was probably a little bit wet, but that’s okay as we have a look at tonight. Again, we have a 40% chance of showers early this evening. That will dissipate by about 9, 10 o’clock tonight, but it is going to get chilly. Seven degrees is the low for tonight under mainly clear skies. Again, not much wind to speak of at this point, but it will be interesting to see. Grab an extra blanket, you might need it tonight. As we have a look at Tuesday, a lot of dry air coming down from the prairies through the Arctic. That’s going to keep things pretty nice for tomorrow, but as we move into later in the week, it’s going to be pleasant, but as you see, the, yeah, we’re going to have a risk of a thunderstorm, possibly some showers. That’s going to push down into the region for late week, Friday, maybe Saturday, Sunday, but I will have more details on that coming up in the News Hour in just a little bit.
All right, thanks very much, Matt. Well, the latest chapter in the long-running senate expense scandal played out today. We’ll have details on that story and more for you as your Monday News Hour continues.
Issues are mainly about travel, dinners, and other expenses, often between Toronto and Guelph, where she was the chancellor of the university.
Senator Pamela Wallen’s expenses are the hottest topic in Ottawa today.
A report by the independent auditors who combed through her claims was handed over to a senate committee this morning, and sources say the Saskatchewan senator is already promising to repay the full amount the report says she owes. Julie Van Dusen has the details.
This morning, three senators and staff met with auditors to hear their findings on the expense claims of fellow senator Pam Wallen. Other than this brief photo op, it all happened behind closed doors.
Hopefully, the Deloitte audit will show us a clear way.
The clear way through the maze of trip expenses Pam Wallen has claimed since being appointed to the senate by Stephen Harper in 2009. Wallen has already voluntarily repaid $38,000, but CBC News has learned the audit identified up to $140,000 worth of ineligible or questionable claims. The issues are mainly about travel, dinners, and other expenses, often between Toronto and Guelph, where she was the chancellor of the university. Sources tell CBC that Wallen also made an attempt to retroactively change her expense reports, and that three of her four assistants told the auditors they saw examples of this. Auditors leaving the briefing wouldn’t confirm any of this. And senators were reluctant to reveal what they saw in the 95-page audit, or if the findings could involve the police.
But in fact, the RCMP can see the report. It’ll be public, and the RCMP, if it wishes to, can, it’ll be online, as I understand it. RCMP can look at it and make a determination themselves.
Months ago, Stephen Harper defended Wallen over allegations of misspending.
I’ve looked at the numbers. Her travel costs are comparable to any parliamentarian traveling from that particular area of the country over that period of time.
But the Tories have since cut her loose. She now sits as an independent senator. Sources say Senator Wallen plans to pay back all of the money with interest, even though she disputes the findings, arguing that the auditing firm is applying new rules retroactively. Julie Van Dusen, CBC News, Ottawa.
Toronto Mayor Rob Ford is once again at the center of a controversy. New cellphone video has emerged that appears to show him at a street festival slurring his words. Stephen De Souza reports this is not the only bit of Ford news raising eyebrows.
A guy on a night out, or a mayor visiting a major city event when it comes to Rob Ford, the answer, like the video, isn’t clear.
Did I have a couple beers? Absolutely had a couple beers, but you know what? I had a good time. I think things are getting blown out of proportion.
Witnesses say Ford appeared drunk and slurred his words at the Taste of the Danforth Festival on Friday. Ford addressed the issue on his radio show Sunday.
If I offended anyone, you know what? I apologize, but I didn’t, I don’t believe I did offend anyone.
On Friday night, people asked the mayor if he had been drinking, but today Ford wasn’t in his office, leaving the deputy mayor to discuss the videos.
I thought they were inconclusive. I really couldn’t determine a lot of what was being said and who was saying it, actually.
It’s not the first time Ford has faced questions about drinking at public events. We found a mixed reaction to Ford’s Friday night.
He’s a clown. It’s an embarrassment to the city. I mean, what else can you say, right?
I think that a lot of nitpicking now with all the issues that they’re bringing up.
It’s his actions that speak louder than words, and when the words themselves are slurred, I think it’s embarrassing for the city.
I didn’t think it was that bad. I thought people exaggerated.
News also emerged today that Ford visited the Metro West Detention Centre in March, arriving well after normal visiting hours to visit this man, 43-year-old Bruno Bellissimo, a childhood friend.
That’s just the way the mayor is. He goes to a lot of places, sees a lot of people, and tries to help as best he can.
Holliday says Ford needs a driver to help him out, something other councillors say could solve some issues.
This is a person who knows the suspicions that swirl around him, so protect yourself by having professional staff with you.
Ford himself was not available today to answer any questions. Stephen De Souza, CBC News, Toronto.
The province of Nova Scotia announced today it’s hired a former Ontario prosecutor to review the case of Retea Parsons. A teenager who complained of being bullied online then died following a suicide attempt. She reported being assaulted by four boys in 2011. Police investigated at the time but didn’t lay any charges. As Jack Julian reports, the new review will look at that decision.
The story of Retea Parsons continues to reverberate in Nova Scotia. Today in Halifax, government ministers announced details of the next external review.
Our goal is to ensure that no stone goes unturned and to give us the most broadest perspective of what transpired here.
Murray Seagull is a former deputy attorney general of Ontario and its former chief prosecutor. He says he has a lot of interviews to do.
All of the people involved in the initial investigation from the police and the public prosecution service, and they also intend to reach out to the family, of course.
The review will examine if police followed their own guidelines for investigating allegations of sexual assaults, child pornography, and cyberbullying. It will also assess the legal advice prosecutors gave to police. Another element is the impact of social media on young people and their families in the context of a police investigation.
I am hoping to learn more about that and make recommendations that may improve the justice system.
Seagull has no power to force anyone to cooperate with his review, but police and prosecutors both say they’ll do all they can to assist.
Halifax Regional Police and the RCMP will cooperate 100% into this investigation.
Nova Scotia’s Public Prosecution Service was created to ensure its independence from provincial politics, but Landry says in this case, ordering a review was the only option.
Not to question it, I think, would be wrong, and I think it’s healthy that we have this opportunity to do that.
The review will cost $200,000 and will take roughly six months. Landry says if it uncovers any new information, police are free to widen their investigation. Jack Julian, CBC News, Halifax.
James Whippy Bulger, the former head of Boston’s Irish mob, faces life in prison after being convicted of playing a role in 11 murders during the 1970s and 80s. However, after 30 hours of deliberations, the jury said not proved or no finding in eight other murders, much to the anger of the family members of the victims. As the head of the Winter Hill gang, Bulger allegedly shot or stabbed some of the victims himself and ordered the deaths of others.
Lover spat, a dangerous situation, and a dramatic rescue in China. The woman you see dangling there was arguing with her boyfriend from her fifth-floor balcony when she slipped and fell. She'd locked him out of their apartment, so he was on the balcony below. Now, he managed to grab her as she fell, but he was also dragged partway out the window in the process. Neighbors and firefighters worked together, and after about 20 minutes, the couple was lifted to safely. No word whether they continued the argument afterwards. Let's take a look at the activity on the markets today. The Toronto TSX posted a 52-point gain to close at 12:594. The Dow slipped five points to 15419, and the Nasdaq was up nine points to 3669. The Canadian dollar dropped 8100s today to 97.06 cents US. Coal Matt Scooby doing double duty for us this evening, and we start off tonight's sports report with some sad news.
Yeah, it really was a tragic day out in New Brunswick today. Hockey world, it's a 16-year-old prospect with the Acadia Bathurst Titan has died. Forward Jordan Boyd collapsed and died today during the Quebec Major Junior Hockey League team's first day of training camp. Boyd was a 2013 fourth-round pick and had received a medical evaluation prior to camp, but an autopsy has been ordered. Meanwhile, on the diamond, the Toronto Blue Jays were looking to salvage a split of their four-game series with Oakland at the Rogers Centre this afternoon. Jay Happ making his second start since returning from injury. He missed three months recovering from a skull fracture after being hit in the head by a line drive. And things don't start well. The first batter he faces is Chris Young, who takes him yard on the 10th pitch of the at-bat. The solo shot is Young's 10th of the season, and the A's jump out to an early 1-0 lead. Top three, Happ gets some help from his defense. Yoewinius Cespedes with the ground ball to third Brett Lowry, barehands it, makes a strong throw to get Cespedes at first. The Canadian making it look easy a day after his bobblehead day. There you go, in the home half of the inning. Jed Lowry says, anything you can do, I can do better. Gets the Jose Bautista ground ball in the hole, makes a leaping throw that gets Bautista at first. Some good defense in this one. Skip all the way to the bottom of the eighth. Runners at the corners, Bautista, hot shot to third, goes off the glove of Alberto Caiaspo. Jose Reyes scores on the error. That ties the game up at one. Top nine after Casey Jansen loaded the bases. Caiaspo makes up for the earlier error and rips to Jansen, offering to the corner in right. Two runs, come around to score on the RBI double, and Oakland retakes the lead. It's 3-1. Next batter is Stephen Vaught. He likes as a base hit to right, another run, scores. A's would add another in the inning, and they go on to win 5-1 the final. They take three of four from Toronto. On the local scene, the Lakehead Thunderwolves hockey team has landed another recruit. The team announced today that defenseman Andrew Tessier will be on the roster this season. Last year, the 6'1", 205-pound D-man played 41 games with Drummingville of the QMJHL. From one team who hasn't started their season to another that just finished it, yes, the Thunder Bay Border Cats. Last night, the Cats wrapped up another disappointing year against the Alexandria Blue Anchors. Pick things up in the bottom of the seventh, 4-2 Alexandria after Carter McKeown led off the inning with a double. Dylan Becker hammers one off the wall in right-center. McKeown scores to cut the lead to 4-3. Two batters later, Jason Vosler with a base hit to center. That catches Becker. It also ties the ballgame up at four apiece. Same inning, Cats put two on, and Adam Collins absolutely crushes the Dominic Reed pitch to left. The ball clears the scoreboard and then lands on high street. That's a bomb three-run shot. Collins' third long ball in just 11 games this season. Cats lead 7-4. Next inning, Blue Anchors load them up, and Andrew Malato rips a double to right-center. Two runs, come around to score. And then after a Tyler Curtis sack fly tied the game, Chris Goodman rips a double of his own to the gap in left-center. Two more runs, plate caps a five-run inning. Back and forth we go. Blue Anchors are back on top. It's 9 to 7. Move to the bottom of the eighth after McKeown scored on a wild pitch to cut the lead to just one. Tyler Duplantis, he bloopes a single to right. Becker counts, and of course, what do you know, we're all tied up again. Next batter is Vosler, and he hammers one to the corner in right. Duplantis scores all the way from first, and Vosler will end up on third with a triple. Cats retake the lead. It's 10-9. So to the top of the ninth, Thunder Bay within and out of winning the game. But yeah, it's been the story all year. The runners on the corners, Curtis singles to right, Dalton Loos crosses home with a tying run. We've got free baseball for the last game of the season. Top 11, bases loaded, Ben Allen base hit to right, two runs, score. Blue Anchors would add three more in the inning, and they go on to win 15-10 the final. So Thunder Bay finishes the second half with a record of 8-27. Worst in the league after the game, Cats manager Dan Holcomb summed up what was a disappointing year.
We broke a lot of offensive records. You look at Tyler Duplantis with the RBIs. You look at Dylan Becker with runs scored, Phil Lyons with stolen bases, last night scoring 18 runs. I mean, we had a great offense all year. The fans knew we were going to put up runs every single game, so it was going to keep us in a lot of games. But one thing we got to get better on for next year is pitching. We got to bring in some guys who are going to throw strikes, going to be able to pound the zone, and going to be able to, you know, really compete on the mound for us. And if we can get that with the offense that we have, we're going to be all right next year.
On the hard court, it was a fantastic week for Canadian tennis. Not only did Milos Raonic make it to the final of the Rogers Cup in Montreal, but he had to get through fellow Canadian Vasik Pospesil in the semis. It was the first time in decades that let alone one, but two Canadians were in the spotlight at the national tournament. Yes, Raonic lost to Rafael Nadal, but as Alison Northcott explains, he's taken Canadian tennis to another level.
It was with great anticipation and high hopes that fans entered the stadium, ready to cheer on Canada's top player.
Everybody's pumped. It's a, it's a, it's a big deal.
Somebody excited to see Canadians in the final, absolutely.
I'll be cheering for the Canadian, but I think it will be tough.
After all, Raonic was the underdog facing off against one of the best players in the world. With 12 Grand Slam titles behind him, Rafael Nadal was a force to be reckoned with. And despite support from fans, in the end, Raonic couldn't keep up. Nadal defeated the Canadian 6-2, 6-2.
The most important thing with today is I sort of tried to create a little bit too much. I sort of tried to go for a little bit too much. I didn't stay within myself, and that's not how I need to play.
A disappointing loss for Raonic and his fans, but their support didn't waver.
Of course, I wanted our homeboy to win, but I thought it was a great game.
We would have liked a more tight game, but I mean, we're very proud of Raonic. I mean, he's got a great future in front of him.
Even though he didn't take home the cup today, Raonic nonetheless helped propel Canadian tennis to new levels this weekend. The last time a Canadian even reached the final was more than 50 years ago, when Robert Bedal won the cup in 1958.
I've been waiting for this for years and years. And it was more than time than that train got passed. And I wanted somebody to take my place about 50 years ago.
In yesterday's all-Canadian semifinal, Raonic's win over Vasik Pospesil propelled him into the top 10, the first Canadian male player to do that ever.
We're making a mark that we want to be amongst the best in tennis, and this is just the start of it.
EC, most important moment of my career so far. So I'm really happy that I can be here. Thank you very much.
And some say it's just the beginning for Raonic, too. He called today's match a stepping stone and a motivator to keep getting better. Alison Northcott, CBC News, Montreal.
To the links, let's go back to the PGA Championship in 2011 in Atlanta. In the final round, Jason Dufner was standing on the 15th tee with a five-shot lead over Keegan Bradley. Not only did he watch that lead evaporate over the next four holes, he lost to Bradley in the three-hole playoff that followed. Pretty heartbreaking. Yesterday, Dufner entered the final round of the PGA Championship, a shot behind leader Jim Furyk, and he was hoping to avoid any such drama in a quest to capture his first major title. After a birdie on four to tie for the lead, Dufner on the par four fifth, his second shot, this was the toughest hole on the golf course yesterday, but Dufner making it look easy. He stops within a couple of feet. That birdie gave him the lead to Furyk, the 54-hole leader. His only major came back in 2003 at the US Open, but on six, he gets the birdie putt to drop from a different area code. That moves him back into a tie for the lead. All weekend, Dufner was hitting great approach shots. That continued on eight. He nearly holes out for eagle. The kick-in bird put him back on top by one. Henrik Stenson, meanwhile, trying to keep pace with the leaders from the rough on the par five 13th. He's going to roll his second shot up the fairway to the edge of the green. He would two-putt from there for birdie to get within two of the lead, but on 14, he ends up in a divot, and is going to chunk his pitch into the bunker. Looking like me on the golf course, that's for sure. That led to a bogey and dropped him out of contention. After a couple of nice chips with the fairway wet around the green that helped him save par, Dufner was back at it with the irons on 16, just dialed in, spins it back to within a few inches. That's another birdie. Furyk also birdied the hole, but on 17, runs into some trouble, duffs his chip. That led to a bogey, puts Dufner up by two, and Dufner would tap in on 18 to win this year's PGA Championship, his first major win. In Moscow, Canadian Brienne Tyson is second after the first two events of the heptathlon at the World Track and Field Championships. The native of Humboldt, Saskatchewan, is behind a Ukrainian after the 100-meter hurdles and the high jump. The seven-discipline event wraps up tomorrow. And that's not for London, Ontario's Damien Warner, who won a bronze yesterday in the decathlon. That was Canada's first medal at the event in 18 years. So pretty cool stuff from him.
Been a bit of a drought. Nice to have it over.
No kidding.
Thanks very much, Matt.
Well, tonight at 10 o'clock, we have the new series Under the Dome with your full viewing lineup. Here's tonight's edition of TeleTalk.
Tonight, we've got murder games, survival stunts, and life in a fishbowl on Global Thunder Bay. Starting at 8 on Psych, a VIP party turns into a murder mystery weekend for Sean and Gus. Then at 9 on Get Out Alive with Bear Grylls, the five teams must rappel down a dangerous cliff. And at 10 on Under the Dome, Junior stands up to his father and discovers the truth about his mother. Over on CKPR Thunder Bay tonight, the flesh may be weak, but the spirit certainly isn't. First at 8 on Murdock Mysteries, William investigates a murder seemingly committed by a ghost. And at 9, the team searches for the mother suffering from postpartum psychosis on Cracked. TeleTalk is brought to you by Points, the
Well, despite some showers earlier this morning, things are getting very sunny outside, and it's looking like that's going to continue, Matt.
Yes, indeed it is, Holly. That's the good news, right? Despite all the rain we've had, it's finally nice to have some sunshine and some beautiful temperatures. Speaking of that, today, obviously, we reached a high of 18 degrees. As Holly mentioned, we did have that passing shower this morning. We could see that again a little bit later tomorrow, but I'll get to that in just a second. It was beautiful today, 18. Again, very little wind to speak of, partly cloudy. Let's have a look at what's happening across the country as we stand right now. Vancouver and Prince George, 22, 26 degrees respectively. As we move into a little bit more west, Edmonton and Calgary, both 22 degrees. There is a severe thunderstorm warning, though, for the southern parts of Alberta, also into the B.C. interior right now. Some of them are already, some of those spots are already seeing torrential downpours, so we'll keep our eye on that. But again, those parts of the region are going to see some rain either right now developing or tonight. As we move into the prairies, Regina 23, Saskatoon at 26. Mostly sunny skies out on that part of the country. Winnipeg 22, as well, seeing lots of sunshine. Can't complain about sunshine. Again, as I mentioned, particularly with the July we just had. As we move into southern Ontario, Sault Ste. Marie, 18, cloudy skies. And that cloud continues out through Toronto, Montreal. 22 degrees in Toronto and Ottawa, Montreal, 18 degrees as well. Quebec City, little bit more sunshine out in Quebec City, 21 degrees. As we move into the east coast, Fredericton sitting at 26, beautiful sunshine. Again, east coast, can't complain about sunshine. Halifax, right now, 22 degrees, beautiful skies, as is Charlottetown, St. John's, at 20 degrees. And they are loving life out on the east coast right now. As we have a look at what's happening across the systems map today, as we see that high-pressure system moving down, that's what's going to continue through tomorrow. But as we get into Wednesday, you're going to see this cold front that that's pushing down with the low-pressure system in front of it. This is what's going to cause part of that precipitation that we could see later in this week and possible for the weekend as that continues to move down through the region. But again, we'll see, for the most part, for the late part of this week, we will be seeing some beautiful temperatures. As we have a look at what's going to happen across the region tonight, Dryden, 7 degrees, as is Atticokeen, but mainly clear skies. Going to be chilly, yes, that's for sure. So if you're going to have a bonfire tonight or thinking about anything like that, well, it's Monday, but you know, you never know, why not? Grab an extra sweatshirt, grab an extra blanket, that's for sure. 4 degrees in Armstrong. Want to talk about chili. We're almost down to the freezing point. That'll continue into Greenstone Marathon, the north shore. That'll continue into Greenstone Marathon, the north shore. Sault Ste. Marie does have a chance of a thunder shower tonight when they're going to sit at 10 degrees. Moving into the forecast tomorrow, going to, again, that rain is going to be possible, continuing for Sault Ste. Marie as there might face some showers. The north shore, Greenstone as well, as we move up across, there could face a passing shower as well, as I mentioned. Nothing too bad, though. Shouldn't be anything too bad. West of the region looks beautiful at this point. 21 across the board from Red Lake to Kenora to Dryden and Fort Francis. So they, again, beautiful temperatures out there for tomorrow. Thunder Bay at this hour, 17 degrees, mostly cloudy skies. Wind is gusting a little bit, up to 21 kilometers per hour, but again, that will taper off into the evening. As we get into the evening, as I mentioned, same thing with across the region, very chilly temperatures, dropping down to 7. Chance of a possible shower, as I mentioned earlier, 40% chance early this evening, but that will be gone by about 9 or 10 o'clock tonight. Again, not much wind to speak of later tonight. As we have a look at your day tomorrow, partly cloudy skies tomorrow morning, but it's still going to be 7 degrees. But as we hit the noon hour, going to be 17, sun and clouded, as I mentioned, tomorrow afternoon. There's about a 30% chance of a passing shower. It's going to depend what area of the region you're in, about whether you will see a shower or not. Even in the city as well, it could be across the city. You might see some showers, you might not. It depends, again, on where you are. As we have a look at the five-day forecast, Tuesday, partly sunny, partly sunny skies, again, chance of a shower. Wednesday, mostly sunny, 24. But what I want to show you is these temperatures. As you have a look, 24, 25, 24, 24. It's going to be a beautiful week for the most part. As we get into the weekend, we could see some possible showers, but there is lots of sunshine, and those lows are going to stay a little bit higher than they have been, which is definitely good news at this point. But again, get out there and enjoy that beautiful week ahead.
Well, in summer, in the summer rather, in which we've had a situation where sunshine and warm weather is at a premium, most of us have been watching the weather forecast just a little bit closer. But how much do you know about the systems that form our weather? Well, Emily Curtin has a bit of an explanation for you in this week's edition of Cool Science.
Summer is here, and that means that you're probably starting to plan lots of really fun outside stuff. Now, the first place that most people turn to when planning some kind of outdoor fun is the weather report. I have a really cool demo here that can help us understand what's happening in our atmosphere. Let's pretend this bottle is our atmosphere. Our atmosphere is made up of a mixture of gases, oxygen, nitrogen, and there's also water vapor. In our atmosphere, there's a lot of air pressure, so I'm going to add in some high air pressure. What's happening in there is the temperature is getting higher, the pressure is getting higher, and the water is starting to evaporate. Now I'm going to pop the top, and let's see what happens. Now that there's low pressure inside of the bottle, all of those water molecules have cooled down and turned back to liquid, so they've condensed. If you hear on the weather report that there's a high-pressure system moving in, then you know it's going to be sunny and beautiful outside. But if you hear that there's a low-pressure system, then you probably want to plan to stay inside and play some board games. Now that's cool science. For more information, visit tbnewswatch.com.
Hey, Matt, now you know where the clouds come from.
Absolutely. Very informative.
Pity our poor politicians always trying to find new and exciting ways to reach out to the public. Some of them, not such a good idea. We've got one example for you coming up right after these words.